Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Algonquin Regional School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, October 19th, 2022. Calls in session at 6:33. And just before we start the business of the meeting, I'd like to, it's a very exciting night, and we have some special recognitions. So I'd like to turn it over to Principal Bevan.
Yes, sure. Well, thank you, everyone. And it gives me great pleasure to invite you all. You're welcome to stay for the full meeting, everyone, but we're going to start off by the most fun part, which is to recognize our National Merit Commended Scholars, and we have a semifinalist as well. So I'm going to announce your names. If you can come up, I have a small certificate for you, and we'll celebrate that moment. And if you head back to your chairs after that, we're going to have some cake. So let me get started over here. So for those of you who don't know, our National Merit Scholar students, the commended students are students who finished in the, some of the very top scores in the country for the PSATs. Only roughly 30,000 students in the whole country received this honor of the many hundreds of thousands of students who take that exam. So we're excited to celebrate the following folks. So I apologize if I announce somebody who's not here, or RFP list is a little bit incomplete. Elliot Fang. Joe Folsom, Joe's here. Isabel McNulty. And our semifinalist this year is Madeline Jiang.
Do you want me to take it with you in it?
We might have to get a little closer than that.
We vote to accept them but retain them.
Okay. We'll vote to accept the executive session minutes and retain those until they're released, the minutes for September 21st, 2022.
Salmut.
Karen, all in favor. Motion passes. Educational policy, we have it out at this time. New business, legislative update, Superintendent Martino?
Sure. So just a quick update. We did receive notice from the Operational Service Division, which is responsible for setting out of district tuition rates, that they are expecting a 14% increase for fiscal year '24. So that is a substantial increase, one that I feel we really can sustain as a community and as a district. We will be partnering with our fellow communities and advocating to our legislative delegation that that is not something we can sustain in the future. Just as an example, 14% of our out-of-district tuition cost is equivalent to about $300,000 as an impact on our overall out-of-tuition budget. So it is significant. So we're watching it very closely, and we will be advocating where we can. We are drafting a letter to submit to our legislative delegation, and I will have the chair sign on our behalf.
Is there any type of increasing, like, circuit breaker?
There has been conversations around using circuit breaker as one mechanism to offset the increase.
So in the past, when we've had not specific issues, but these kinds of issues, and they always do seem to revolve around special ed skyrocketing. So at the time, when I was particularly involved by special ed transportation, it really, really does help to actually face-to-face talk your life through. So if, in Southborough, we used to have, you know, they come into coffee hours or office hours, whatever they call them, and I'm sure they do the same thing in Northborough, if you see them and you can make it, it absolutely makes all the difference in the world to go there and tell them. Because at one point, you know, our representative was saying, "You're the only one on hearing this, though." And I said, "Ask her out." And she did, and it made a big difference. So I highly suggest that, especially because it seems like we're getting new ones, newly re-elected ones, that are maybe energized, to take the opportunity to get new ones.
The MASCE ASJoint Conference, I don't know if anyone is interested in going to the conference.
I believe Kathleen Howland has registered for the Thursday, which I believe is the third. However, I don't think we've appointed a delegate. I would just, I would just note that if the Northborough/Southborough Regional School Committee does not appoint a delegate, it does not mean that we lose an opportunity to lobby for resolutions. This is a very slow-moving process and just the start of a long, multi-year process to actually see these types of initiatives and resolutions come to fruition.
So I know that the MASCE Conference is evolving, and I believe before the pandemic, where they were getting to was to a place where if you registered, every one of their sessions was videotaped, and so as a registrant, you had access to all of the different sections, which is highly valuable. So even if we don't send somebody to the whole thing, I'm asking, I'm not suggesting, that it might be valuable to have a registration so that we could easily have access to, you know, to sections. Because there's a lot of really great information. And I'm sorry I can't go, but I can't do it.
I think if we, we can register Kathleen, because she's attending.
Oh, the other one.
Yes. He's like, "Is he listening?" We can register Kathleen Howland for all of the days, and that way we'll have access.
That'd be good.
And can all of us have access to it?
Yes. Okay. Next is approval of grants and donations. We have a couple. This is two meetings in a row.
Yeah.
Paul's really disappointed he's no longer.
So I'll, I'll let Principal Bevan kind of share the donations that were received.
Yes, sure. So first, we are asking for the committee to kind of accept the donation from Avidia Charitable Foundation that Ben here tirelessly, always looking to help offset the, the cost of our winter ball, has approached a variety of organizations, and Avidia has committed $200 to the Student Council for that purpose. And additionally, we also, I don't know if we need to vote on that one and then the next, or I can tell you about the other?
Yeah, why don't we take a moment of time? So I think you discussed that last time. I needed help with the winter ball, so it's necessary to see more contributions coming in. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to accept?
I'll move that we accept the contribution of $200 from the Avidia Charitable Foundation to the ARHS Student Council.
Matt, is there a say it? All in favor?
And additionally, a member of our Northborough community has kindly donated $500 in lumber to our Applied Arts Department, specifically Mr. Arabian, who's our wood technology teacher.
A motion to accept that?
I just have a question before. Is there a specific need? Is there a specific project, you know, that he reached out for?
I don't think Mr. Arabian approached him. I think it was a member of the community who had high-quality lumber, and the cost of lumber has gone up significantly. So all the projects that they're doing and the timeline for getting those has gone up as well. So I don't have details, but I think that's my impression.
Okay. I'll make a motion then to approve the lumber donation from Mr. Peter Miller for approximately $500 to the Applied Arts Department.
Second.
And so all in favor? For that passes? Thank you. Thank you both to Avidia and to Peter Miller for contributing to the students here. It really does take more than just us to support all the students, so thank you. Distribution of department presentation schedule?
So from the last schedule, we just made one change. We were anticipating that the Fine and Performing Arts Department would present this evening, but we tried to balance out the agenda topics, so they'll be presenting in November. So we pushed them out a month.
All right, I was looking across. Okay, goes down. Any questions on that agenda or anything that you think? Thank you. Next is the Superintendent's Report.
Sure. So before I turn it over to Principal Bevan, I just will summarize. He'll share his typical principal's report, but also will present the Algonquin Regional High School School Improvement Plan Action Plan for '22-'23, and also provide an overview of some of the accomplishments that took place last year. Last year was the first year of the plan's implementation, and the goal is each year to revise the plan, re-look at the action steps, and update those accordingly. So that's what will take place this evening. And with that said, I will turn it over to Principal Bevan.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Martino. So since the, since we had the, our event, at the start of this, the recognition of our National Merit Scholars and the principal's report primarily will be the School Improvement Plan, because it's pretty, it's a little bit dense and pretty wordy. So I'll try and keep it short. The other two things that are worth mentioning that, let me, let me start sharing. There we go. All right. Are that this year, as you know, we are in the middle of a new bell schedule, which we covered with some detail last week. We continue to monitor for how students are responding to that and staff. And in November, we're spending a staff meeting looking at how staff members, what kind of best practices staff members are, have developed to make the bell schedule work optimally in their classes, so students are getting the best experience possible. So I think in November and December, we'll have achieved the rhythm that is, I think, necessary to know if the bell schedule is a good fit for us. So I will continue to share with you details about that as, as they, as they are pertinent. Additionally, and it doesn't really show up in our, in our School Improvement Plan action steps, but a lot of our year this year, you may, you may know, you may not recall, will be that we are being in the process of re-accreditation. So this year, we are going into the collaborative conference year. So that means that we are developing a deep dive self-reflection report over the course of the first six months of the school year that is presented to the faculty. It's generated out of the faculty, but pulled together in a finalized form, voted on by the faculty as an, as an accurate reflection of what we're doing well and what we need to work on. And then we have a collaborative conference in March where members from the ASCA team comes and helps us, helps us with that examination. This is all in preparation for, in two years, we'll have the full-blown 10-year re-accreditation visit. So a lot of that work this year is already begun, and so a lot of the work of the, the school-based leadership team, that's our department head team, has been working toward those goals. So it's not terribly glamorous, and it's not really picture-worthy. So usually I share some pictures, but a lot of the work in the last month have been around bell scheduling about in the ASCA. All right. So it gives me pleasure to share with you our School Improvement Plan and where we are on the action steps for this year. So the three big categories that, that we're all tackling as a district are empowering learners, equity of opportunity, and healthy and balanced learners. And the way I think about that work is, is those are all things that we are specifying as high, as high priorities in this year and in this three-year period to achieve the kind of outcomes that, that are outlined in our Portrait of Graduates. So that work was accomplished a few years ago, and we continue to spiral back to and reference back to that document. I don't have that document up here, but I'll have the gears that you might be familiar with that, that kind of signify the categories that we really prioritize when we are setting our, our goals for this year and every year. So the three categories, I'll start with the first one. So the district objective is to implement instructional practices under empowering learners to engage students in developing and demonstrating their knowledge and skills through rigorous, innovative, and relevant learning experiences. And the initiatives that are kind of nested under there that we are targeting closely at the high school level are to give students opportunities to use technology to solve problems, learn, communicate. And what that actually looks like here at the high school is what's listed here. Let me go back a little bit. It's to finalize, and this work has already begun last year and, and is really finalizing this year, is to work on identifying power standards under the digital learning and computer science standards to include and identify where in the high school those are taught, and what classes, what departments. They're heavily concentrated in one department currently, and we're, we're looking to expand that beyond, beyond the applied arts. That's primarily where those are being taught heavily. We're also, and this work has already begun, and it's really, the, the goal is to operationalize what we're calling the DLCS toolkit. It's exactly what it sounds like. It's a, it's a resource for staff to learn how to best use digital learning and computer science tools in their classrooms, even if they're not a class that might be typically associated with digital learning and computer science. And then additionally, and this is a carryover from last year, our library department, who's sensational, by the way, is looking to continue to assist students in the development of their research skills, specifically in, in the digital realm. And just, I'll put these boxes up on each of these three large categories, give you a little bit of an update. Here we are in October. We're not waiting to, you know, to begin this work. I'll just give you a bit of an update. So the DLCS toolbox is published at the end of September by our digital learning team, and teachers are examining that and looking for ways to incorporate that work into, incorporate those tools into their work. Under the equity of opportunity category, the district objective is to provide all students with access to challenging and culturally responsive learning experiences that meet their individual needs. And under that larger objective, the district initiatives are to do what it says here, foster culturally responsive and inclusive communities and environments that provide equal access. And I think anyone who follows us on social media or goes to our events is aware of some of the events that you're seeing. We have one tomorrow night that I think fits exactly this kind of priority. And what that looks like here at the high school is that we're spending time, if you recall, last year, it was the first year we had unified our common, we had created common mid-year and final assessments for our, our courses, our light courses. And this year, we're now, we're taking that, you know, to the next level to start to ensure that teachers are, are examining that student, the student work that results to identify achievement gaps and also to surface best teaching practices. Additionally, we're working to implement the World of Difference Program. That's through the Anti-Defamation League. That was a big success last year, and this year, we're carrying that work forward. One of the things I'm really interested in doing, and I'm on a subcommittee with the other administrators in the district in Northborough and Southborough, is to, to examine our building resources and including our classrooms to see how culturally responsive and inclusive those, those things are. It's not just about the textbooks we choose. Sometimes it's about the posters there on the wall, and, you know, there's all kinds of things that we have in our buildings that communicate messages to students, and we want to ensure that those are messages of inclusivity. Additionally, we're looking to identify barriers to opportunity for students that are in underrepresented populations. And part of that work is to review the program of studies to see if there are, you know, historical or kind of traditional barriers that we haven't examined critically in a while forever, to see if there's anything that we can, can or need to adjust with our program of studies to ensure that all, all of our students have the same access to the same high-quality instruction. So an example of what's happening so far is the ADL training sessions have already been completed, and I've already kind of initialized the study, the program of studies work. And we have our, our staff meetings topics mapped out for the whole year, and the, the common assessments examination, kind of best practice work will be at the February staff meeting. So we have a strategic roadmap for the year that really just maps out all the things that you've heard about already and that you will hear about, and that's, those are just two of them. And then, under healthy and balanced learners, that's the last broad category. The district objective is to prioritize social, emotional, and physical well-being of all of our students. And the two district initiatives are to develop and implement a coherent, systematic approach to social, emotional learning, and to develop a comprehensive approach to health education. And what that looks like here at the high school is what's here. To implement PD opportunities to support CASL, which is our framework for, for tackling SCL and improving SCL experiences for our students. To implement an SCL screening tool, which we identified last year, piloted, well, we more than piloted it, we, we implemented it to full scale here at the high school and at the other school levels as well. This year, we're doing it again. We've moved the timeline up a little bit further into December. We did it in the spring last year. In December will allow us to, to make more meaning and actually respond to the data a little bit more, with more action. We'll also inventory health curriculum standards and coordinate to ensure that our health educators are doing what, what the standards require. And we're going to be looking at the Metro West adolescent health service results to see what actionable steps are required to make sense of that data. And finally, we're going to be examining the impacts of the start time change from fall to 2021. And that, as you know, kind of overlays onto the fact that we have a bell schedule this year that has rotations in it that we anticipate may have benefits. I think the bell schedule rotations could amplify the benefits of the later start time, because it kind of spreads the wealth of, of those benefits across all of the classes, not just the first classes of the day. That was not the intention of the bell schedule change, but I suspect that that will be one of the, one of the, one of the factors or one of the benefits that we see. So just some progress updates for so far. The SCL screener, like I said, is planned for December, and then we're waiting to see what the quarter one data on student achievement looks like, which, to see how the bell schedule change and the late start time might, might match up, might deliver some benefits. We won't quite know. It's hard to tell currently. Those are the big, excuse me, that's the, our whole school's plan in one very brief kind of bulleted-out overview, but these are the big things we're targeting over this three-year period under the guidance of Superintendent Martino and with all the other, all the other schools. And this is what it looks like here at the high school.
Open up to the committee. Questions?
So I don't know if my question is for you or for Superintendent. The, the Metro West Health Survey, I feel like we're, do we, how often do we get those results? And I don't really feel like we always get, you know, to know exactly what's in them. I don't feel like they're very forthcoming with their information or whatever. So are you using it from a couple of years ago? Or are we using it more, you know, a current one to really help with this?
I just always feel like this comes up in one of our meetings. So we, we received our results this past spring.
From?
Metro West.
From last year?
From last year.
Correct. So Mary Allen, I don't know if you want to speak to the committee work that you're doing with Jennifer Lipton-O'Connor in the high school, and how we're thinking about how to best communicate that information. I think in the past, it's set with the Health and Wellness Committee.
Right.
And it was presented at that committee level, but wasn't always shared with the larger community.
Right.
Or the school committee. So Mary Allen can share some of the ideas that we're thinking about.
Sure. I was actually just at a meeting today with the CDC, which is the group that puts out the Metro West Health Survey, to talk about ways to share it, better ways to get more people involved with it. But we, we got our key indicators back in March or April of last year, and it was for 2021. So the survey was done right when the students started coming back to school after the pandemic. So we have to take all that data, the data in mind when we're analyzing all the data. And from what we saw from the indicators, what we saw, that's why we did the parent webinars in June, as a result of those key indicators. And then we got more detailed data this fall that we are just getting ready to analyze with our wellness committee, with our substance abuse prevention coalition, which is being rebuilt and reorganized right now. So we're looking into that with the, both the town's health departments, and we have an epidemiologist that will be looking into the data and comparing the data to see where we need to focus our efforts.
So when you had the parent webinars, how were they? Were there, a lot, did a lot of parents attend them? Do you know or not?
I don't have that. The Jennifer Lipton-O'Connor would have that information, but we could get back to you. They are on the website still. We are planning, I'm not sure if it's quarterly or monthly, webinars for speaker series or presentations for our parents and students, touching on all of the risk factors or the, even the positive. for our parents and students, touching on all of the risk factors or the, even the positive supports that we have, you know, helping we, you know, beef up what's good, what's helping our students, the protective factors that they have. So that series is starting in November. We have our first speaker that's, Sean's been working on securing for us, and then we have, the Wellness Committee is planning on finding two more speakers. The advisory team is working on finding some speakers. So there's a lot of different committees that are working together to, to help support all of us, for our parents and our students we're looking at.
And then can we have, can like, can the Health and Wellness just come here and let us know about some of the stuff that was on that? I mean, I just feel like there's so many different places right now that are talking about mental health with kids, and I think it's such an important, you know, it's, and it could be a lag thing, you know, between 2020 and now, you know, I just think it's...
And I think it's one piece of data. We have a lot of data that we could look at when we're trying to figure out what would be best, the best support for our students at the time, like Metro West is one. Second data, we have our social, emotional learning screening that was done. We have, you know, our attendance, we have our equity things, we have a lot of data that we take. So when we put all of those together, that will, when we can sit down and really look at all of that data together to see where we need to focus our efforts. But yes, we can definitely come and present that.
Thank you.
This is such a broad question, and I apologize. But what is the general process for measuring? If we're, if we do all these things, are we, are our students better off? Like, and we talked about a ton of data, but like each individual, one of these is like, okay, that's great, ensure excellence. How do we know we're doing it? How do we know it's excellent? Is there, is there some form of data, you know, sort of like before? Or are we just assuming that, you know, in terms of the cultural, you know, diversity? You know, kids aren't happy. They'll be happier later. I mean, like, how, is there, is there, I'm not even sure there's an answer to the question. Is there a way to measure all of these great initiatives?
So I'll just speak to, and Stephanie and Sean can add. I mean, I think we are developing key performance indicators to say, okay, how will we know when we have made incremental growth or improvements to those areas? Not all areas are easily indicated in terms of key and performance indicators, but that's some of the work that we're doing with our teaching and learning team and the department chairs to really identify what those are.
Yeah, I would add that when I came on board, it was in the pandemic, but even pre-pandemic, some of, we didn't have a lot of really great systems for, even frankly, for like classroom attendance here in the high school was very localized. Teachers kind of had their own way of doing it, and we came up with a unified system that was not terribly difficult to adopt, but it, there were some bumps in the road. Now we're starting to see, you know, a really unified data set, not just on daily attendance, but on classroom attendance. I think it's an opportunity, you know, this is the first year where we really have a really robust data set, and we can see which students aren't just making their way into the building, but which ones are making their way, you know, from every class, one class to another. And a lot of that data, we want to make sure we're looking at students and subpopulations, you know, students of color, you know, who, we want to ensure are having the best opportunity and that, that all of our students' attendance rates are, are what we want them to be. And now we have a much more granular opportunity to do that. That's just one example. I can also, you know, give you another example, the Metro West Health Survey, I think this is the first time they're identifying the performance of subgroups in a lot of these things, a lot of these risk areas, and they can identify basically a sense of belonging for students in, let's say, who are identifying as LGBTQ plus, and whether or not they feel like they have the same sense of belonging to students who are not in that subpopulation. So I think you can comport some of that data to the attendance data, and I don't think it's exactly a science yet. We don't have it. It's still more of an art to try and make sense of all that. But our systems are strengthening almost monthly to know which students are struggling and to comport that data against, you know, things like attendance and things like our mid-year exams. We can now start to disaggregate in ways that just simply didn't exist until we had common assessments. We didn't have common assessments until last year, and we didn't have classroom attendance until this year. So I think we're growing through these, and not everything can be measured, but things that we can measure, we are not only measuring, but we're looking to identify how those, those things work together to reflect the experience of students with a specific focus on our students who are in subgroup populations that are struggling to start this struggle.
And is the thinking when we, when we introduce these systems, because what always happens, right, is that, oh, five years from now, we'll get a new classroom attendance system. And so then all the data from five years ago is gone, or it can't be, you know, so is there some vehicle that you can encapsulate the trends so that you, five years from now, can see what happened five years ago, and so therefore maybe X, Y, Z is, isn't working?
Okay, can I ask a question? Is it panorama that's being used for that?
So we do use panorama, not for the SCL, but for other administrative surveys. I think Dr. Reinhorn can speak to the system of data collection that we're trying to create that creates historical picture of progress and identifies those key performance indicators.
So what you're describing, I would say, is a challenge that districts across the country face.
Business is facing, absolutely.
Right, which is that we have a tremendous amount of data from a lot of different places, and, and we send data to DESI, DESI then gives data back to us, they put different pieces together. There are curriculum platforms that we use that give us data, there's Metro West Health, there's all of these different sources. And there's, we have been working to figure out how can we bring together all of these different data sources so that we can not only see them more readily and more easily, but then analyze them and use them and look at them over time. So we're actively talking to a few different vendors right now that are trying to solve this problem. And Julie Doyle's and I, actually, we're on the phone with someone yesterday, and she's at a conference that she was at today, and seeing some of the vendors that we have been investigating and seeing presentations from some districts that are using them. So it's a piece of work that we're excited about and hopeful that we can wrangle the data so that we can see it over time and also be able to put multiple pieces of data together on the screen and say, Metro West Health, SCL screener, attendance, what's the story they all tell together?
Okay.
So it's something we're working very hard on.
I think our goal is to create a data dashboard that answers the question, are we making progress toward the outcome of the portrait of the graduate? You know, are we indeed, you know, moving the student experience closer to making sure that all students leave Algonquin prepared for the world of work for college or career?
I guess the last thing I would say is that I just, that when I think about school improvement plans and strategic plans, implicitly, they're always our best theory about how to get where we're trying to go, right? And so they're our best thinking, and we have a theory of action, and when we do it well, we're explicit about what our theory of action is, which is like, if we're working on something like attendance or school start time, we have a theory about if we change this, then we believe it will have this impact on these outcomes. And then you try to measure the different outcomes along the way, and depending on whether you get the results you want, you then track yourself back and say, well, were we pushing on the wrong thing, or were we measuring the wrong thing? And so that's what these plans are really all about, is us trying to explicitly say, these are the goals, and this is our best thinking about how to get there, and then you're asking exactly the right question, which is then how do we measure.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on that? Because that was one of the questions I had was around the staggered schedule, the bell schedule, and you said you were going to try to measure what effect that's had. My question was, how do you do that? Which I think gets back to what you were just saying, but, I mean, do we have a plan for that yet, or is this part of the vendors that you're pursuing?
But can I just add too, though, it's, it's making sure you're clear on what your outcomes are before you make the change. So it's saying, we're not making change for the sake of changing. Here are the outcomes we're trying to achieve. Here are the schedules that we think meet those outcomes, and then we choose the one that we think that best aligns.
And then we collect student data, teacher data, academic data around, are we achieving the outcomes that we set to accomplish? So I think it's clear that when we move forward with initiative, that we set the outcomes before of why, and what are we hoping to achieve before we move forward. And that's how we measure progress, you know? So it wasn't like Sean came into the district and said, I just, you know, I'm new here.
But the leadership staff.
People love it when, you know, you take the schedule.
But in that particular example, I mean, I'm trying to think, what, what are you measuring against?
So I can respond to that. So in our old schedule, we had the first two blocks of the day were locked in and they didn't move. So students who perhaps had a hard time getting into school on time, or they just were, you know, their brains weren't fully awake, and that's many of our teenagers, in fact, all teenagers probably is kind of more optimal for learning later in the day. I anticipate that students' performance in periods one and two classes historically were probably lower than what this year will be periods one and two classes that are only periods one and two on one day of the cycle and they rotate freely through the rest of the day.
You've talked about measuring the performance on a specific student?
I think we could, no, I think we could probably look at, we're looking to see, and one of our assistant principals is Caspus this year, to look at, see if their quarterly averages and their, their scores on their mid-year final exams, which are now common across, now we're able to see if their period one, two performance is the same as identical cohorts in periods and they remain in periods of the day, because now the new variable is that that period one, one and two don't meet routinely and only from 7:30 to 9:00 AM, which is what they did forever. And so that's like one example that could be pretty specific, and there's a variable that looks nicely, pretty closely and narrowly. So I'm interested to see what it says. So things like student attendance in those periods, their quarterly averages, and then their performance on mid-year finals, those are just the three really pretty broad measures that I suspect they would show us that there's a measurable difference. And they might not, but they're very well.
And I'll just add to, you know, major change in the schedule, the length of a block.
Yes.
So, you know, I think if you change the amount of time a teacher has in front of the students who come to a class period, you know, the thinking is that evidence-based instructional practices come into play, and what you can do in a longer block allows more experiential, hands-on, project-based learning, as an example.
And it's very difficult to measure, but in this year, when you schedule because the blocks are longer, because you're dropping a block, that means one less casting time per day times 180 days, that does add up to something like 13 or 14 more hours of instruction over the course of the year. Now, that's spread across all your classes, so it's hard to measure, but that's a lot of instruction students are getting this year. Don't tell anybody, Ben, but a lot more than they were getting last year. I mean, it's really two school days, and one would think that that will have benefits if only that they don't have the hustle and bustle of a one extra transition per day for the entirety of the whole school. But again, hard to measure and hard to really pinpoint what the impact is on that work. Thank you.
I think, I think to piggyback a little bit on the bell schedule thing, I'd be a little, I'd be curious, maybe Ben, you might be able to shed a little bit of light on this, a little anecdotal, perhaps anecdotal evidence related to the later start time, how students generally feel about that? And is it working, is it not working? And then I have a follow-up for Mr. Bevan related to that.
The start time or the bell schedule?
I'm more interested in the start time at the moment.
So start time, I mean, personally, I really like it. We also, though, it's been so long that I don't really remember the 7:20 high school starts, because we haven't had it since, we had half of the freshman year, and then we went home, and then we came back for half the time. So I don't really know if I, people really can think about it right now that well anecdotally, because it's been three years of it, which is hard to think about. Because we haven't had a 7:20 AM start since March 12th of 2020, because then we went to connect when we were meeting from like 10 to 1:00 or something, and it was all over the place. But I think, thinking about how alert people are if they come to like a club meeting that's at school at 7:20 or 7:30 versus walking into first period at 8:00 AM, I think the difference is substantial. And I think anyone, like it was said when it was originally put in, like people are going to bed at the same time either way. I don't think people are necessarily staying up 40 minutes later to try to like get the same amount of sleep. So I think people are getting more sleep, and I think first period feels a lot more lively than it used to remember it being this year, kind of in general.
Well, that's great. I think, I think it's awesome. I think the later start time is important. I think shifting that date later is great. One of my concerns related to that, and it's a, perhaps when you're collecting data, I would be curious to see the difference between, if this is even a data point you're interested in collecting, the difference between students that are being dropped off at the start of the school day and the students that are being, that are taking the bus. And the reason why I say that is because I know that I have students at the end of my street that are getting picked up at about five minutes of seven. And with the later start, I'm not sure if any of those students are high school students, but I know that my son gets, either walks over or gets dropped off, and he gets here pretty close to the start of the school day. So most of the time, he gets here pretty close to the start of the school day anyway. And so I'd be curious to see if there, if there's a noticeable difference, especially from a perspective of equity, in terms of students that are able to be dropped off at a later time versus those that are actually waking up earlier to get a bus, so.
I would say I'd be interested in seeing that data. I think collecting would be a challenge, because not everyone always gets dropped off, and certainly we know who rides the buses and can know who tries a parking pass, so there are data sets we can access there. But if there's a way to measure it and make it some kind of meaningful...
Sense of it.
Yeah, sense of it.
And one thing I would add too is that, when was that bus on the road pre-g? So that, that same bus was on the road at 6:10. So it's, but it is important to look. I do think that when students gain their license, that their arrival time is much later, they take advantage of it.
Thank you.
Can I add one thing with the start time? The only kind of, not necessarily negative, but downside that I think people have noticed is the 2:30 to end of school day to start of practice is a lot shorter period of time than when we ended at 1:50. So I think a lot of clubs are finding it difficult to meet after school because like athletes who have to be at practice at 3:00, have to be in the locker room at 2:45, don't have much time after school. And I also think coaches have been very flexible with that, and I acknowledge that, but that's kind of the one thing that I know people have complained about with the new start time.
Ben, have you heard of any, or have you heard of any clubs or teachers that are starting their clubs before school, running a club, say, half an hour before school starts?
I think only the student council. And that's all. That has been our practice going back 15 years.
So the various honor societies are always before school, so I don't think...
Yeah, and what is happening certainly is some teachers are having extra help early, you know, before school than, you know, more than after school to make sure, so when I'm here very early, it's not uncommon for students to show up at 7:00 or 7:15, and more often than not, they're there to meet a teacher to get extra help or, you know, whatever reason. So we have the doors accessible by students to put themselves, enter and get themselves into the building without having to do that for them after setting, beginning at 7:00 AM because of that. Started at 7:30 and that, just there are too many kids who wanted to be here for that. But I would say that lots and lots of kids, but that's a mutually beneficial arrangement for teachers who can't stay late, and we still want to provide that extra help.
Great, and kudos to those teachers and students that do make that initiative to come in the morning to get that home. Thank you.
So interesting, at first I thought I had something unrelated, but now I'm seeing how it's related. So I, this may just be a request for next meeting, because I got an inquiry from a resident last evening that was interested in the presentation on the fine and performing arts, and just trying to figure out, is it on tonight's agenda or next time? And where I think the question ties in is in the area of equity and opportunity, the question she had related... question she had related to apparently athletes and folks that want to participate in the program have to make a decision, either you do sports or you do performing arts and they thought that was unfair. So I thought maybe they can just speak to how that works, is there any opportunity to create access or equity and opportunity to students that would be willing to do both, whether it be in a limited capacity or something else? I thought it tied in and then just interesting, you know, its impact in clubs as well, so.
I can do my best to gather that. Well, Ben, you might be able to talk about a lived experience.
Yeah, I think it's certainly, I personally don't play an instrument. I help within a logistical capacity with the musical, so I know some context from that, but I'm not that tasked in it. But I know there are lots of kids who participate in the bands that meet after school and are also on sports teams and it's difficult, but it's doable. And I think both the musical department and the coaches are kind of willing to work with each other on it. So like I know one of my buddies on the cross-country team like missed practice yesterday for rehearsal and the coach was okay with that. And then the director of, or the conductor, I guess, of the band is aware that some days might miss rehearsal because you have a meet or a game. And I think the most important thing in all of these situations where like time is kind of the issue is students advocating for themselves and kind of talking to whatever adults may be involved. And I think once they've made that contact, everyone is very flexible as long as it's not abused. So I think, though, it's definitely doable. I wouldn't say it's definitely like you're either an athlete or a musician, you're either an athlete or you're in this club. It just requires a certain sense of self-advocacy to do it. And I think that's something that when kids come to the student council, it's like we're having trouble with this, we often say, like, and try talking to them. And oftentimes that solves the issue without having to make any major steps.
That kind of leads into our next topic. Are we, any more questions on the school improvement plan? I mean, that's a lot of detail and a lot of work and it's multi-year work too. So that leads us right into athletics. It was perfect.
Do I weigh in combat? I mean, to go back to original point, I think our coaches do a fantastic job working with our teachers and our directors and have the ability to work with both arts and with athletics. And I can recall a couple of years ago, we've actually worked with the department and rescheduled a game around a concert that was taking place so everyone could attend. So I think they do a good job with, you know, allowing the students to either miss a practice to go to an event or vice versa. So there is opportunity, I think Ben said this, to do both. And we will always be there, we're willing to work with the arts department as well and make changes where necessary so we can work together. You got my.
Okay, all right. Well, first of all, thank you everybody for allowing me to come here tonight. And as with the norm with Algonquin Athletics, our student and athletes continue to represent their school communities with outstanding performances on and off the field. It's hard to believe that we are approaching the end of fall, goes by really quickly. So kind of to begin, we had close to 400 athletes participating this fall, actually it was about 390 meets to be exact, and at this time last year, we had about 412. So our attendance right now is a little bit even, just down about 12 student athletes, even though our enrollment is down a little bit. Our three student ambassadors for our council leadership team, which is Katie Cullen, Zachary Meele, and Catherine O'Connell will participate in our league and MIA leadership workshops throughout the year. We have one coming up next week that's going to be talking about leadership and culture and fan behavior that will be attending in Marlboro. And their first MIA leadership workshop will be at November 10th at Gillette Stadium. It's called the MIA Leadership Summit, where up to three student athletes are able to participate across the whole state, attend Gillette Stadium, go to leadership workshops. And then our athletic council and our leadership team, we've had two meetings this fall, Ben has been a part of it as a representative for Boys Cross Country. These meetings included all fall team captains, our team representatives for the lower levels. Players participate in group work and focused on leadership. And some additional topics that we discussed were being comfortable with uncomfortable conversations with not only their peers and with their coaches, handling hard work, which leads us into overcoming adversity. And we talked about the roles of being a team leader and being a great teammate and making good decisions on and off the court. Ben, hopefully you have some positive feedback from our two sessions so far. And I think it's great, we're also developing an acronym for Titans because we did this about two years ago for the acronym of captains, which we came up with was communication, attitude, perseverance, teamwork, aspiration, integrity, and non-judgmental, and sacrifice. And so we're going to be working on, continue to have dialogue about coming up with an acronym for Titans. Our NALE Day, which is our National Letter of Intent Day, will be held on Wednesday, November 9th. And this is, this year will be, again, as we do in every single, every previous year, is recognizing our athletes who have the opportunity to further their academic and athletic career at the collegiate level. ARHS earned the 2021 and 22 MIA Sports and Sports Honor Rule recognition. We're not having any student athletes or coaches disqualified. This is the back-to-back year for 2021 and 2022 also had it in 2020 and 2021. Our boys and girls soccer teams are nationally recognized for the second year in a row for, by the United Soccer Coaches Association for winning a team academic award for their exceptional academic performances in the classroom. Our Hall of Fame is back for the first time after three years, which is great and we're very, very excited. And it technically scheduled for Friday, November 25th. ARHS Athletics will induct five new members of the class of 2022, which includes our 1979 Boys varsity basketball team, Allison Hay, a former soccer, lacrosse, and track standout, class of 2006, Tom Mergnazi, class of 667, he's a former coach, basketball, was my former coach, actually, Chris LaBello, football, track, and field, he's a class of 1986, Kevin Brown, football, basketball, and baseball, class of 2009, James McHugh was track and field, class of 1979, and Mr. John Healy, a longtime supporter of the athletic department and former girls lacrosse coach, who are receiving the 2022 Spirit Award. The Athletic Hall of Fame, which was established in 1999, has previously inducted many outstanding individual student athletes and several championship teams from Algonquin. And it's an honor from the athletic department, the ARHS Student Athletic Council, and the Hall of Fame Committee to present the 2022 inductees. Just a quick recap of where we stand now with our fall, with our fall records and achievements thus far. Our girls soccer is ranked eighth in the state with an eight and six record. Our boys soccer team sits at three, nine and three and preparing to play in our central mass playoffs, which all begin for our sports teams next week. Volleyball is 11 and six, just got a big win tonight versus Shepherd Hill and they're ranked 16th in the state. Field hockey has a 591 record and ranked 22 in the state. And our top 32, hopefully we have the ability for those sports teams, they finish in the top 32, they'll make the state playoff tournament, which starts in November 4th, I believe. Golf finished the season with a nine and seven record and placed third in our league championship and finished 10th in the MIA state sectionals. Both boys and girls cross-country had great regular seasons in league competition and competed in multiple invitationals across the state, sorry. The cross-country league championship meet is on 10/22, it's our mid-watched league championship meet. Cheerleading starts their competition schedule next Saturday. Unified basketball started their regular season schedule, they had a great game today versus Schueneberg. And in a few weeks, unified basketball will participate in our league jamboree. And the MIA state jamboree will be held at Algonquin Regional High School on November 16th. Lastly, football is sitting at one and five, however, they continue to work hard and overcome some early season adversity. And I'm looking forward to hosting Westboro on Thanksgiving Day for the first time in three years. Do you want to switch the slide?
Yep. And the next, the next slide is really about the uniforms and we were asked for an update on how uniforms are being replaced, so maybe before, there are questions about all the, a lot of information before we get into the uniforms, which is.
All right, I read fast. So me and Principal Bevan worked on sort of, of course, to have a sort of a uniform update. I gave a brief update at the end of last year in June, but sort of a better visual, better roadmap of sort of where we stand going into this year. Our typical replacement for our uniforms would be the 67 years and our sub varsity teams would always inherit those retired uniforms. So the varsity would get new uniforms, those varsity uniforms would go down to JV1 and then the JV1 uniforms would go down to JV2. We have started the cycle, it actually started about two years ago. And I think it was one of the first conversations I had with Principal Bevan about two years ago about maybe the anticipation of the mascot change. We just put a pause on new uniforms about three years ago because of COVID. And then going into the following year, we had a conversation about the potential of meeting uniforms due to a mascot change. So we actually started this cycle a year before the new mascot was approved, which was back in April.
And in that, in that instance, just to remind you, Mike, or the members, we continued to buy uniforms, we just chose language that was neutral and could be used if the mascot was changed or was not and wouldn't delay us further out by a year. So that year, we just simply ordered uniforms that had Algonquin on them and not Tom Hanks. So that, I think, afforded us, we ended up a bit farther along in the replacement cycle by about a year than we would otherwise have done.
So where we stand right now, you can see what's been replaced up to fall of 2022, which is where we stand now, you can see that we have our cheerleading, our ski team, which is our girls varsity soccer, our field hockey team, which is varsity, boys and girls tennis team, and boys cross-country. Where we stand going into this year, it's on the cycle, we have girls lacrosse, boys track, wrestling, boys varsity soccer, and actually missing in there was girls track, lacrosse country, and girls track, lots of luck, have gotten new uniforms this year as well. Through boosters, and I say through boosters is because boosters have been instrumental in the transition. They've done fabulous, you're all fundraising and this is always, fundraising for new uniforms has always been an option. They go out, they work hard to generate their money and on top of that, uniforms has always been an option to purchase, especially if they wanted to move up in the six, from the six to seven year cycle, if they wanted to go earlier, they knew that they would be able to purchase their own uniforms through booster funds. On top of uniforms that are purchased, they're also purchasing team gear, equipment that might be needed. So uniforms is not something new this year that they've purchased, however, purchase another item that is available to them if they did not want to wait their turn in the rotation. So with that being said, we had our boys varsity basketball and our girls varsity basketball are purchasing new uniforms and built in rotation. And our football team was able to purchase uniforms through boosters going into this new fall season. And then the three-year rotation that we have left up is the 2023 and 24, we have girls varsity ice hockey, girls JV volleyball, varsity baseball, softball, and varsity volleyball. And then, as you can see, our 24 and 25. And then I guess the biggest question mark and what we're going to have to continue to work with as we work through the budgets each year to stay, make sure we're staying within our budget, we're not going above, is that we have to, because of the rotation, what the status quo has been over the last six or seven years, we're going to have to work in the lower levels with the anticipation that our lower-level teams may be still having tomahawk issues to tire for the next two to three years. But I think it has accelerated a little bit than what we originally approved, which was a, you know, a five to six-year plan.
Questions?
Yeah, I was wondering what it is.
I hope I answered.
Thank you. Well done. Yeah, no, that's awesome. Thanks.
The girls ice hockey, we share with other schools, so they contribute cost too, I would like.
We do, we have it split up between ice time, yes, and officials. We have, it's a good system that's worked with our five other schools that we have. We don't embrace 100% of the cost, we have it split.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you have any other teams that are shared?
We have a co-op with Westboro for boys rugby, but we have a homeschool. And we have a co-op that we, for girls golf with Westboro. And they are the homeschool.
I would just add that without the boosters and the help of our parents and community, I think, you know, students would be looking at older gear for a longer period of time and a high interest in wearing kind of something that really represents the school that they play for. So I think this has, I think it was a fair question, it's fair that, you know, how are we, how is this happening? And I think this, I hope, I'm hopeful that they'll do it next time they're answering it. I think the boosters have, whereas they might be diverting the, using their funds to pay for gear or equipment that in another year, we're diverting that more to accelerating the replacement.
More wear uniforms, because people always ask.
They ask, yeah.
It's always, you know, you know, we'd be sitting there and saying, oh, what about the uniforms? You know? Like, ah!
And it's a little bit, it's, I wish I had one easy answer, but I think, for example, like football, the uniforms are now made in a material and through a process that they're quicker to purchase and much cheaper than they've ever been. If you've seen the uniforms, they don't have that tackle twill, which is like literally stitched on. It's like, almost like a printed fabric, it's, you know the name for it.
Screen printed, yeah.
And so that product is much cheaper and so the boosters, instead of spending $30,000 to outfit the football team, is spending much, much less. So they can accelerate it much faster than they would have if this were five or 10 years ago. So it's not an apples to apples kind of comparison, each one of these, each one of these did take deliberation and thoughtfulness and boosters input and investment.
Does it wear just as well?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, last, the screen printing is on 90% of our uniforms now, don't wear, they don't wear off. It's actually supplemented inside, it's supplemented.
It's actually not screen printed on the fabric, it's like the ink is like pumped into the fabric. So it's just about that.
No peeling.
And it just lasts longer and holds up.
Yeah, we could not, the boosters enough of how.
It's been wonderful.
The support they are. And I think too, just to highlight, I think our students are embracing the new logo, the new mascot quicker than, you know, which is great to see. And I think that they're excited about the opportunity to wear and represent the Titan logo earlier than maybe what they might be on the rotation. So, which is great to hear too.
It's hard to believe it was only February that we identified Titans or April.
Last year.
Yeah, it's been really nice to see.
Well, the football team was excited. Coach Cahill put together a nice video when he unveiled them all at one of the pasta nights that they were.
I will say, football in particular, the coaching staff is really, really great group that has led the way in adopting the Titans, but also just setting a tone for the building. They're struggling this year and it's been a tough year in a lot of ways. They've done a nice job of keeping, kind of promoting the Titan as a mascot this year. And all of our teams have done a nice job. The whole senior class, and I'll give Ben credit here, the senior class has really set a nice tone for the year. This is a big year in transition with mascot alone and we don't even think about it because they've set a really great tone, so. Jill?
I just have one question. If it would be possible for Greg to send a copy of this slide to us, because just as you were mentioning at games, it was mentioned at the North River Town Meeting, okay? So it, I was trying to take notes, but it didn't work. I was trying to shorten it. So if you could, Greg, if you could get that slide to us and just so that we have it, it would be very helpful.
I will update, I were missing two, I tried to.
All right, so Mike, why don't I have you update it and then once that's done, I'll give it to, I'll send it to Greg and then Greg will have it.
Oh, perfect. Fantastic. And thanks for your, for your update on this, this is wonderful. Every time you comment, it's very valuable. Thank you. Thanks for your enthusiasm.
Love my job.
Can I just ask, you did comment on impact testing really briefly.
I actually was going to bump in there because, yes, we've had some, it's been a tough, tough year for a lot, some of our athletes through injuries, a lot of our football teams, not only sustaining career-threatening injuries, however, concussions has been a real, real impact this year, pun intended. We are working on the impact testing. We just up to date now, we're close up to 100. I would just like to say that the impact test is recommended to take it once every two years, so we were going and working with anyone who did not take the test last year. But also, we're highly recommending that everyone take it again, even though it's, you know, it's not required. We are recommending that even though you don't have to take it for every two years, we're trying to work with our teams to take it every year. But we are, we're mainly focused with our incoming freshmen or any students who did not take the test at the beginning of last year. And then we'll continue to work with our winter athletes and then into our spring and have a report at the end of the year.
It can be Paul Bucka for like the rest of the year.
Yeah, I just, again, want to applaud the coaches and taking time during practice to really make this a priority through Mike's leadership, I think it has made a difference.
Looks about from like two to a hundred or so.
Looks go from like two to 100 or so.
Very middle. We had 500 athletes take it last year, which is the most, so it was.
I think like four years ago, though, it was probably a handful.
Yes. I think also too, is our athletes.
A 100% increase, but it went from two to four.
And I think too, we're seeing now is that families are reaching out to us to take post tests too as well after they sustain a concussion and having their licensed healthcare provider read and evaluate.
Okay, I have one thing. Another kudos to Coach Allen, our football team, who went out and bought a whole bunch of those things they put over the helmets. I forget what you call it.
It's a, it's a training for safety. It's a shell. It's a.
It's extra padding.
Yeah, it's a padding over the head to sustain the impact that they have during practices.
So he bought, I don't know, 40 of those, I think, with kids. It's just great. Unfortunately, we still had a lot of concussions with, you know, with football. But I mean, I'm convinced he's doing whatever he can.
He's doing a fantastic job. Tremendous leadership. All of our coaches. Great.
That concludes Mike's report. Thank you very much. concludes my report as well.
All right, so next on a superintendent's report is the enrollment report as of October 11th, 2022. And as you all are aware, the October 1 enrollment data is very important as it drives our fiscal year, upcoming fiscal year budget and assessments.
Oh, sorry.
So our enrollment as of 10/11/22 was 1,215. I will note that we did add a column to the enrollment report, and that is through age 22. Our age graduate through 22 students were part of the grade 12 enrollment in past reports, and we disaggregated that, so it's a separate column. NezDeb was anticipating 1201 for our enrollment for this year. And if we subtract the age through age 22 and the others, we're at 1,199, so very close. And I'll just note that we are projecting enrollment decrease over the next several years, and that is trending as NezDeb was projecting. So if there are no questions, also in your report is the FY23 monthly general fund expenditure report, and the FY23 statement of revenue. Becky will provide an overview.
So as of September 30th, we have $1.3 million remaining on the bottom line or 5.15%. We're trending closely to where we were last year at this time, where we had 1.5 million or 6.23%. The one line item in particular that we are really keeping a close eye on is our electricity costs. Unfortunately, our contract for electricity expires in December. And so we are working collaboratively with the town of Northborough and with Constellation Energy to secure a new contract for the future. We are looking though at great heights. You're all hearing what's happening on the news. So that is something that we have factored into this projection. But the good thing is, is that we are seeing benefit of the solar panels that are on the, on the roof of the school. Just for an example, last month, in total, we used 145,000 kilowatt hours. And of those, we were able to use about 38,000 from the solar panels. So it is providing some benefit in terms of the costs. Also, I just wanted to point out that there are a few line items in your budget that are showing as being over budget that we have created some corrections to. They were placed in like incorrect line items, and so we have since fixed that. But those line items are 2453 instructional hardware, 2455 instructional software, 4400 networking and telecommunications, 5300 copier lease, and then also 2309 ADA services. But the finance team does continue to regularly look at these accounts. We are consistently like looking at our annual projections. And so at this time, I don't have any concerns with the FY23 operational budget.
Questions about the budget? So those were just, just kind of those things?
Yes, yes. If you remember last year when we were preparing the budget, some of the, we created some new line items to align with Desi. And so people are still in their old, even the old accounts. So that's something that.
I get it. So we need a vote on this to be accepted until audited?
Yes. So I'm moved.
So, second. This is closest to. All in favor of accepting until audited? Okay. Did you talk about the statement of revenue?
No, yeah, no.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So during the month of September, we did receive our September 1 assessment from the town of Southborough. You'll also notice that we are starting to see some of the student fees that we do collect on an annual basis coming in. Our athletic fees, as Mike has already mentioned, do reflect that for sports enrollments as well as the gate receipts, which I understand have been very positive. The other thing is the circuit breaker I mentioned last month, that we had kept the circuit breaker projection the same as last year. We still have not received our circuit breaker number yet from the state. Last month at the Massey Conference, Desi did say that they, we should expect it probably within the next month or so. So we are anticipating it soon. It's my understanding that with the new Student Opportunity Act, that they are still trying to come up with calculations since transportation is now included in that calculation. And this is year two of the SOA that they're implementing. So it is still fairly new for them. So that number has remained the same. But there's really a quiet month for the most part in September.
Let's say revenue is charter school tuition. I thought that's out. That's, I'm sorry.
No, charter school, we do, we do have an assessment from the state. From the state, yes.
Oh, okay. Any questions on revenues? So we need a motion to accept until audited?
I'll move.
Paul? A second.
Okay.
Karen? All in favor? Passes.
So the next item is the FY24 budget priorities. And I believe a discussion on if there are any recommended changes for FY24.
Uh huh. I think Paul had a, these are the areas that we as a school committee help direct. The schools to look, you know, what's important is we create a budget going forward, and we approve a budget. And one of the major things coming up is the athletic complex. And I think an important discussion to have is, should that be added to this budget priority list? Because we've been talking about it as a priority, but it's not necessarily, there's a creating short and long-term capital plan for the high school, but it's not specific in here. So it was brought up that that should be a point of discussion. Paul, do you want to talk to that?
Sure. I think tomorrow night, we have a meeting with some for CPA?
CPC.
CPC, to get CPA firms. But anyway, one of the questions we were asked is whether we put money aside for this project. And we haven't, because it's a challenge project. Unless you want to include all the money that's in that spreadsheet on maintenance that you have to spend if you don't do this. But anyway, I thought it would be good if we could at least say, it's one of our budget priorities, we should vote on it. So that's why, and Sean said, I think it's a big ticket item. And I think it ought to be one of our most priorities.
Should it be a priority or a priority initiative? Do you have any ideas?
Take this up for discussion, right?
So the way I always envision things is, is it X or is it teachers? Because that's basically what is the bulk of the budget. So if we're going to prioritize this project, are we going to prioritize it in our operational budget? Like, are we going to, or is it just going to be in the capital budget? Because, because these priorities, to me, are kind of like how we prioritize allocating, you know, our big huge budget as opposed to, because this is going to, I mean, how much is this project?
So, I mean, to me, it's a one-year thing. But I was thinking something wording along the lines of work with the towns of Northborough and Southborough to fund the athletic year complex.
To get them to fund it.
Yeah. Yeah, two things. The second to the last bullet, for creating funds for short and long-term capital plan for the high school. Right. I think this should be a sub-bullet that specifically called out the athletic complex. And I agree, this is not going to be part of our operational budget. It is part of our capital plan. And I just, on a side note, when we are asked, you know, do we have any money that we're contributing to this project? I think we also need to remind the townsfolk that we did bring for proposal to create a capital stabilization fund that has not been passed and approved. Therefore, we have no mechanism to establish funds for any type of capital project at this point in the group.
So during a town meeting, though, would, if it's not in the operational budget, would it be another article?
It'd be a warrant article, correct.
Okay. So I think, I just, I mean, since it's just, since it's a budget priority for 2024, putting it under a book, a book of funds, I mean, you can take it off the file in a year.
I like the idea, I think the idea of putting it as a basically a subcategory under the capital plan to high school, specifically this year. I think that's, that's a reasonable, I think it's reasonable. And I certainly agree that it's separate. I mean, if we're talking about looking at a budget that has to be reduced at some point, you basically wind up skipping over to the capital piece anyway. But it is, it is something that's important for the school district going forward. So understanding that it's at least on our radar, and it is a priority for us. But knowing that, yes, if it came down to, Greg, it's separate. But if it came down to eliminating teachers and choosing an academic, you know, losing academics over athletics, I don't think any of us would ever say, you know, let's go with athletics over academics and what we're able to offer students here. But it is on our radar.
Go ahead.
Also support the commentary about adding a sub-bullet. Oh, Warren, a suggestion, it's begun my recollection from the last meeting. It would be very clear to the committee that the facilities as they currently are are not safe. They've been maintained as long as they can, but they don't offer safety for athletes. I think that should get in here, and that's why it's a priority to talk about athlete safety.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just add that I think the language we've been using is really at its end of life. You know, it's, it's no longer, you know, we've maximized the use of it, you know, current complex.
I would just agree that putting, this is a public document where we're saying what's important to us. And I think going back to saying, like, if we had a mechanism such as a stabilization fund, if we could, you put more money forward to it, but it's important to us, and it's important to the, to the athletes and to the people who come here and other schools, you know, work. So it's important for the safety. I think it's good to be articulated. As far as the wording, do we have to do that now? Or can we, unless somebody has some wording?
I don't think it needs to be voted this evening. I think conceptually, if the committee agreed that this is something if it'd like to move forward, we can work on the word and bring it back in November. I don't think it's any of its us from the work we need to do in terms of the budget process.
The budget priorities that are there are what you're going to use to drive the budget process anyways, right? Is the comfort, I mean, just taking the token, we're comfortable with that voting on it. Another time.
So also in your packet is the FY24 budget calendar. So we are documenting all the key milestone events and dates. And I'll just note that we do have a meeting coming up next week, which is the capital planning subcommittee meeting. So it'll be another opportunity to talk about capital plan priorities for fiscal year 24 and moving forward.
I hope the operating budget meeting, I know this is scary. I'm sorry.
It's a tree.
If you have a conflict, let, let me know.
Hope I speak to you.
Sure. So, so I do want to provide a brief presentation about the athletic complex project, review some of the reasons why we're moving forward with the project, and then give you an update of some of the work that's happened since our last meeting. So again, I just wanted to kind of review the why and the master plan. So in terms of the master plan, the goal is to replace the track, replace the stadium field with a charred surface, replace the grandstand and lights, install a multipurpose field with charred surface, replace the tennis courts, and install an amphitheater. So that's the scope of the project. And again, this is the, the master plan, an overview and visual of what we hope to have be the athletic complex in the future years. And I'll just point out, the amphitheater is in the bottom left-hand corner of the softball area.
The point to, like, the items to be, sorry.
So that's a natural, there's actually a hill. So it sits up on the hill and then.
Okay.
So just an overview of the project, of the why. So the current conditions, the end of the useful life is how we describe the current stadium. The tennis courts were installed in 2004. Significant cracking. We have patched and resurfaced many of the courts. But again, they continue to crack. And then again, they're far beyond the life expectancy, which is about 18 years. In terms of the field, the field was not renovated. The school renovation that took place in 2004 was top-seeded. The spectator stands were also not updated in 2004. They are original to 1994, and they are not ADA compliant. And also, in terms of the access of the field, so we do have to rest our fields, and we cannot accommodate all teams and groups for use due to the conditions and stress of the use. And I'll also add that the lighting is original to 1994. And many of our sporting teams cannot play on the field under the lights, for example, lacrosse, just because it's unsafe and doesn't meet the safety standard. In terms of the track, the track was also installed in 1994. If you have observed the track, there is heavy patching. We see puddling, as you can see, evidence in the picture. The track does not meet MIAA standards, and we are not able to host track events. And the useful life of the track is 18 years. And we have resurfaced, has been resurfaced one time and patched and repaired. And quite honestly, it looks like a patchwork quilt at the time. And it's really an unsafe surface. So steps that we've taken since the last school committee meeting. So we have provided citizen information. We had a presence at Apple Cast and here today. We also launched a website. We also launched a website. Becky has consulted with our financial advisor to do some financial projections. And we've also convened a financial subcommittee of the Athletic Complex Project Committee. And they've begun to create some financial models. We had a joint meeting with the chairs of the Athletic Projects Complex Committee, which is called as David Roman, town administrators and town finance directors. It was a very helpful meeting, making sure that we were all on the same page. We've also submitted CPC applications to both communities, Northborough and Southborough. And we met with the Northborough permitting boards, with Gail Associates, conservation, town planner and planning engineering in preparation for making sure we have proper permitting and making sure we know what the application is for. The next steps, so actually tomorrow evening, we're meeting with the CPC committee in Southborough to present our ask to the Southborough CPC. We have not scheduled a meeting for the Northborough CPC, but they do have our application and we anticipate to hear from them shortly. Finalizing the school committee FY24 budget priorities, which, again, the conversation that took place this evening. And we're convening a regional capital subcommittee next week. Continue to work very closely with Gail Associates on completing the 100% design cost estimate and working with Gail, moving through the permitting process in hopes to have the preparation of the bid materials. And we do anticipate going out for bid pre-town meeting. So we have everything lined up pending funding. We need to meet with the town boards, so capital, the board, financial advisory committees, and we're drafting warrant article language. Most of this work will take place in the months of November and December. The project committee is really looking at doing a communication, community forums in the months of January, February, and March, leading up to town meeting. So people have accurate and good information so they can make an informed decision on whether they support the project or not. And I'll turn it over to Becky to talk a little bit about the financial breakdown and then some recommendations.
So this breakdown is based on Gail Associates' 90% design estimates. You can see right now the estimated project cost is just over 7.5 million. We've also asked them if they could break out those items that are part of the project that are eligible for the CPC funding and then those items that are not eligible. CPC will look at artificial turf fields. And then we are also asking the CPC commission in Boston to look over our plans just to weigh in on the various elements, just to make sure that we are, our thinking is aligned with theirs. So right now, we are estimated, estimating eligible funding to be about 6 million and then the remaining amount would not be eligible.
Can you say, just because we use acronyms all the time, CPC, just in case people watching are...
Sure. So that's the Community Preservation Commission. Thank you for pointing that out. So I've also given you the percentage. As you know, in the regional agreement, we do look back on the past four years. We take the average four-year enrollment numbers as of October 1st. So this does take into consideration the October 1st, 2022 enrollment numbers. So right now, this is what we would be looking at for the two towns in terms of what they will be responsible for. And I've just broken it out based on what is eligible and what is not eligible for CPC funding. We do plan to request from Northborough 1.2 million and then from Southborough 746 or so thousand dollars towards this project. And again, this is just a breakdown of what is considered to be CPC eligible. So there are general conditions. That includes any of the insurances, the cost of the general contractor, erosion control, the track and football fields, those components that are not related to the artificial turf, tennis courts, and then the same thing with the JV football fields, those things that are not eligible for, I'm sorry, that are not artificial turf-related. And so the subtotal is about 5 million and we have built in about a 20% contingency. So we are looking at the $6 million total for eligible CPC funding. And then it is obviously much smaller than non, which the general conditions would be anything related to the artificial turf again. And the same thing on the track and the football field and the JV football field. So that's about 1.25 million with a contingency of 20% built in. And as Greg mentioned, I have reached out to Unibank, to our financial advisor. These numbers, I will tell you, were requested at the beginning of September. So the 3% is based on September 9th interest rate. The Fed did raise rates, I believe, within days of us requesting this information. And this projection is also based off of Gail Associates' 50% cost estimate. So I have reached out to them to get a more up-to-date figure for us based on the new interest rates and then also on the more accurate estimates. So we have asked them just to run, we ran a number of different scenarios. However, this is a 10-year and it is a level debt service. So each year, the debt service would be very close to, for the town so that there would not be much variability. But you can see at the end of the day, the Northborough assessment would be about 5.6 million and Southborough would be 3.3 or so. And this is without any of the CPC funds being utilized. And then I think the next one just shows if we were to use the CPC funds, what that would look like. So it is, obviously, that makes an impact on the overall bottom line for both communities.
And that concludes the presentation. Would be happy to ask any questions.
I have a question related to CPC funding. And that would be, I'm pretty sure when I've been, when I've been at Northborough Town Meeting, that this, whenever a CPC project comes before a town meeting, that it's its own separate warrant article. Does that mean that, will we be able to include the CPC funding as part of our warrant article?
We need to amend the warrant article on the floor.
Okay.
All right.
So we would ask for that full amount, then amend to reduce by whatever we had.
We probably have a couple scenarios ready.
Man, it's a lot of so much fun.
And what about, like, fundraising and the boosters?
Yeah, so the Athletic Complex Project Committee has talked about fundraising. I think what the position we're taking is that we're not going to fundraise our way out of the size of a project, that some of the larger potential donors or sponsors really want to see this move forward to a warrant article before they'll even consider potentially donating a portion of funding this project. I think that the information we received, that's been talked about so long, they don't believe that it's being taken seriously. And they want some evidence that it is.
I think, so I think as far as, like, Southborough goes, I think there's going to have to be buy-in. And I could be wrong, but I feel like some people feel like since Elgonquin was in Northborough, that the access to the fields for Southborough isn't really there. So that may be part of a buy-in at our town meetings because, you know...
Yeah, I mean, I think it's really important.
It's extremely important.
A community asset for both communities, not just Northborough, it's also Southborough. The tennis courts, the track, amphitheater, the access for youth sport organizations in both communities. Who, you know, I think those are the why it's important for Southborough.
I think, like, the only thing that we came over here for was girls softball. And it's only because it was two towns. And then fields, and then lacrosse wasn't here, it was something else.
I don't know where youth soccer stands, but I know, like, baseball, the two towns merged for Little League, I don't know soccer's name.
Where does baseball play now?
Well, they still play the same field, but it's no longer Southborough, Little League, Northborough. Little League merged to Elgonquin.
I think, I think the challenge too is we had to rest our fields. So, you know, a grass field, you can't, you know, you can't have any sports on the weekends playing on our field with grass, so...
But I think the residents of Southborough always assume that Northborough's using it, even though you're resting them, do you know what I mean? So it's just, it's just getting that across to people and selling it to them.
Yeah. No, I think that is really important.
And the other question I have too is, so we have a field in Southborough, and I have another field that was just, I believe, that was redone recently. Were there any town funds that rose up privately? So if we're saying that CPC funds can't be used for turf fields, how is that?
Don't call they use CPC funds, but actually CPC funds, correct, from Longbecky, but they can't be used for the turf itself. Everything underneath is okay.
Okay, okay, I understand, all right.
But I think that one, they just, it was an article, it was just recently, it was like 600,000. And it wasn't a complete review like this, that was, I think, the turf and maybe some structure.
I think also, we've had preliminary conversations around, you know, what is the long-term maintenance of these turf fields? And, you know, we will potentially have more opportunity for facilities rentals of these fields and making sure that we create some kind of funding mechanism from the facilities used go into some type of revolving fund for the sole purpose...
To make like a budget, like a line?
Yeah, for the sole purpose of maintaining these fields for long-term.
Of sponsorships to, yeah.
And sponsorship. So we'll provide more information as we continue to move forward. And that concludes the superintendent's report for the committee.
Oh, this vacancy update.
So we are still not 30 days out from the posting, so there's still an active posting. I did check with Cheryl Lafferty to see if we had any interested parties in competing for the vacancy. At this point, we do not. So I think...
You mean this is all word?
So there's, you know, the message is that, you know, there is an open seat on the regional school committee in Southborough and that we encourage folks to apply for that vacancy. It'd be nice to have more than one candidate, or it would be nice to have one candidate.
Yeah, it's a weekly...
It's been posted on the cable access.
Is it on like Microsoft or?
My, I think it has, but I think we'll do another communication campaign.
When I started, I was the two and the other at the time.
Put it on Instagram and do something where people...
Are you really installing these persons to be...
So the only, the only comment I have is that the, there's one committee, the student advisory, I believe you only have one person, I believe it's Kathleen right now? I'm trying to think of, trying to find it on the list.
It's at the very bottom.
Thank you. So the student advisory committee, we are convening next month. And Kathleen is the sole member, but it'd be nice probably to have...
When do you want to know?
We're going to meet 5:30 before the school committee.
What do they do?
Wonderful things. They usually set a couple of goals.
We listen a lot.
Yeah.
I think it's a chance to connect with the school, the student, school council, the student government, and to be directly with them.
Pre-Canada, I think they took, student advisor took up student health and well-being. They help collect their stress, homework, sleep, really provide that, which maybe is a bit there.
In the past, we've discussed the finals schedule and who gets to take finals has become sort of rated and labeled very comminator.
But we haven't done, we haven't had meetings in a long time, right? Couple years?
Yeah.
Do they do them once a month, it's just once?
It's a few times a year, so...
I'll do it.
It's every hour, aren't it supposed to be?
Sean, there's just one correction, and that's the liaison to the end. Education Foundation says inactive, that should be active.
Actually, do you have an update on that? That wasn't...
Yes, I do. That's why I know it's active.
Yes. Do you want to talk about that yet?
Do you want me to? Maybe onto that part?
I think we're also with the assignments ready.
I think, I think, because this is what I was told when I was chair, was the liaison to selectmen should be the chair.
That's true, that's true.
If you can make that change and be aware of where I need to be when.
Never a monkey to hit.
That's how my days go, just somebody tells me to. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Any other interesting things? Yeah, I think now would be a time to talk about those.
Okay. So I am the liaison to the Northborough Education Foundation and we have monthly meetings. And the September meeting was held and also at that time in September, the grants were awarded and Superintendent Martino was there and gave a speech and then I saw handing out the grants. And I just wanted to report very quickly on the five grants that ARHS had received. The first one was Ancient Healers, Modern Medicine, and the Power of Connection. And that grant is going to support a new social studies course here. It's going to be called that same title. The other one was an ARHS ELD Listen Wise Podcast. It's a year subscription to the Listen Wise program for the English Language Development classrooms to support the listening, reading, and speaking skills of our English learners. The third one was a Unified Art Project. And this is going to provide resources for several collaborative art projects, bring students of various artistic talents together to create pieces for the school community, which we'll probably see at different times. Another one is a Titan Townhouse. And this is one to teach students how to better prepare themselves for life after high school. And on this one, they're going to be doing a mock apartment that students will use to practice their skills in a setting. It will support and enhance various life skills to generalize into the home and community environment. This space will be named the Titan Townhouse. And the last one is World Atlases, the world's changing all the time. And its new atlases will give teachers the ability to access the newest resources and most updated maps. And Elgonquin was very well getting the grants, having the majority get the grants. They did a great job. So please thank the teachers for taking their time and also the teacher who is the liaison also to that foundation that speaks to us at often at the, at the meetings. So thank you very much for teachers and wonderful wide selection of grants.
Yeah, I was sad I couldn't make it to that, but Assistant Principal McGowan.
That didn't say it's long. Thank you.
For a future item on our agenda, I would like a tour of the Titan Townhouse. I'd prefer to do some monitor things so we can update our houses.
It's actually interesting because, aside, I know, like, my two older boys just moved out. And last night, we went to see their farms for the first time, so that probably could have helped. Although they did say, since it's like not college, that they're keeping it much cleaner.
So policy, well, distribution, so it's just the distribution of that?
Yes, I think this is important too. It's the distribution of capital stabilization fund policy. So as we move our work forward as a committee, we continue to advocate for establishing this fund. This is one of, I think, three requisites that was requested of the committee for this town, Southborough, and I think it's just the policy in general.
So that's now in there. This is the second opportunity for public comment in our meeting. If anyone in public wants to tell it. Personnel distribution, distribution of personnel.
So in your packet is the October 19th personnel report. So a few appointments to our educational support professional positions. Those are the positions that we are having the most, the full-time recruiting folks for. So it's nice to see that we continue to fill those positions with high-quality people.
Are, are you fully staffed now? Or Sean, are you fully staffed?
We are not, we're not far off.
The ESP population sometimes, there are fluctuations that we're totally aware of. But we're very, very close. Communications, so the committee, I did receive an email in the past month from a, an email from a parent asking about the video, about where videos are available at each meeting. And there was a glitch last April, I believe, with some sound, but they are all available on our website, on our school committee website. There's a video link, and then they're uploaded within a month's time of each meeting. And they're all hosted and organized by the town of Northborough's Cable Access. Was that correct?
Do you have that correct?
Approval of bills.
I think Kathy and Kathleen are the two.
Great, okay. I don't need, thank you. And agenda items for next month. So enrollment projections, is that just for the coming year or kind of like for the coming years?
For the upcoming year, the school year, the budget.
And then we'll start our budget discussion, and then the fine arts, the performing arts will present. Any other questions or comments for that, or questions for that meeting, or agenda items? So we will, we're not ending the meeting, but we're, I need a motion to move to executive session.
I move that we go into executive session with no intent to return to open session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee with no intent to return to open.
I said it twice. It's a free breeze.
Okay, Paul in favor? I almost got out of here. Paul?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes. Yes, the motion passes, we adjourn to.